Now, I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, 10 o'clock a.m. meeting of September 3rd, 2024. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
District 2 Commissioner Whitman.
Present.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District 4 Commissioner Yeager.
Here.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Here. That'd be known that we have a quorum. All members are present. Let's see. Now it's time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on current and future agenda items coming before the Board and on other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those persons present here at the desk. Then we will take comment from those that are pre-registered for WebEx and are currently We request when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or a team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. First, after you're stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, you'll hear a single beep and will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound and at that time you should close your comments. Those members speaking on WebEx, when their time is up, will be automatically shut down. Madam Clerk, do we have people pre-registered or registered here at public comment?
Yes, I do have a few signed up. We'll start with Kostas Kistakis. And the next person who signed up didn't put their name, but it's for the Foxridge MTSU, followed by Nancy Hazelwood, followed by Christina Fitzpatrick. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kostas Kistakis. I came here to speak to you about the light on Ross Lane and Little Road. Thanks to Mr. Oakley, Commissioner Oakley. I spoke with the right person, I got an update. But please keep it in your minds that it was four years ago and we needed there. It's a safety issue as soon as possible. Also, I need to speak to you in regards to the assessment on the paving. We were told in a couple meetings that the assessment was going to be only for people who don't live in gated communities and they don't already pay paving or path hall assessment in those communities. I received my tax assessment for this year and I see it. It needs to be discussed because we don't want to be paying double taxes on something. We should be paying only one. And please keep it in your mind, I've known most of you for a long time. We have a lot of retirees in this community. We can't keep on going up every year on taxes again and again. We have plenty of growth and the impact fees will be paid by the people coming in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
I just have the name is written down with "Public Comment" and "Foxridge MTSU." I don't know who signed up. If you could state your name and address for the record and then begin.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Wright. My address is 3715 Tac Drive, 33543. And I'm here to express gratitude on part of my community for selecting me as part of the oversight for our MTSU. We're very concerned about the drainage issues in our community and I want to express gratitude for the Board continuing to have a relationship with our MTSU and our Oversight Committee so that we can work out the problems going forward. The basic problem is this: New River goes right through our community. We're a legacy subdivision that's been there for many years. As we have new subdivisions that are built up around us, of course, this is going to put additional pressure on the New River drainage area and we want to make sure that those things are maintained properly over the years and perhaps improved so that any additional drainage problems that crop up can be handled with the funds that are allocated appropriately. The basic issue in our race was, if you want to call it that, was that some of the folks who are running for the MTSU believe that our MTSU should be dissolved and the money returned to the taxpayers. And normally I would be in favor of that, except that just didn't handle our issues. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you going forward and making sure that the new development are good neighbors and we're good neighbors as well. If you have any questions to me right now?
No, we can't. It's public comment.
But the gentleman who wants to talk to you is outside talking to someone else.
Yeah, I was going to direct him. I'm going to direct him. Branford is outside that door talking to another gentleman and he can listen to your issues there for your neighbor.
Okay. All right. Thanks again for the opportunity to make public comment. And as far as the last issue on the roads, I want to second what the last gentleman said. Pasco County has a lot of retirees. My wife is retired and disabled and tax increases are a real problem for us. So try to keep taxes low as possible.
We realize that. Yes, sir. He's right outside the door.
All right. We have Nancy Hazelwood, followed by Christina Fitzpatrick.
Nancy Hazelwood, 34110, a nice place. Couple of weeks ago, some people in the northeast area got a notice from Tampa Bay Water that they were going to do testing if well fill could be put in the Northeast Rural Protected Area Plan. They sent out a survey with the notice asking what the residents concerned with the project would be, such as economic, environmental, or similar concerns, not asking whether we wanted it there or not. The survey was also online for two weeks. On further investigation, I found the plan had been in the works for over a year and they were going to determine where in the Northeast Rural area it would be before the end of this year. The well fill is supposed to take fresh water from the aquifer and mix it with brackish water and possibly inject what's left over from the brackish water, which is salt, back into a very deep level of the aquifer. Tampa Bay Water says the objective is to supply water for the growth coming to the east side of the area. We hope they are talking about Dade City and Zephyr Hills. I and my neighbors have a couple of objections to this. Why were we not informed of this in a timely manner? Some of us asked for a community meeting from Tampa Bay Water and heard nothing back. Everyone in the rural areas on well and septic, it is part of what helps us stay rural. Of course, we are concerned with a large amount of water that could be pulled out. We have already watched ponds and lakes dry out in other parts of the county. Tampa Bay Water is estimating nine million gallons a day from the Northeast Rural Protected Area. Northeast Rural areas in the Brooksville Ridge High Recharge Area and the Green Swamp that supplies water for three counties. With already a lot of dependence for water in Northeast Rural, this makes it a strange place to withdraw more water. Northeast Rural is supposed to stay rural. The community wonders if this well fill is a way to attract high-density development into Northeast Rural. We could be assured this is not the case if you add something to the Northeast Rural Area Plan that says it will not be used for running water in any development in the rural area. Tampa Bay Water is two Board members sitting on... Tampa Bay Water is two of you all sitting on their Board. We'd like to know why that project wasn't brought back to us in a timely manner. So I would like more information coming from this Board, especially when it involves Northeast Rural. And I am hoping that you all please do something to protect us out there instead of letting intrusion come about without a say-so from your public. Thank you all. I appreciate your attention.
Is David Allen here?
He's on account of call.
Okay. If you would, I think Branford's still outside there. Go out and speak to Branford. He should know something about that.
Okay, I want to hear the next speaker.
Or Nick, do you work on some of that? Nick's in engineering, but he can get your questions.
Okay.
To be real short, it's future use, nothing any time current. Okay?
All right. Christina Fitzpatrick.
Name and address for the record.
Christina Fitzpatrick, pursuant to Florida statute. I'll keep it sealed. Thank you. And if you can put the full code ordinance up there, please. Today, I'm here to discuss the signed ordinance, 406.1.6. This signed ordinance was updated in January 2024 and is objective to any new candidate due to the changes of code enforcement. Due to all of these changes, code enforcement was unaware of which parts of the signed ordinance needed to be implemented. I have been to code multiple times during this past election season and code did not know which ordinances to follow and not enforce. It also stated, as you can see, on number six, temporary sign shall not be double-faced. Three, number one temporary sign of any type or banner not prohibited by this code on each residential lot, non-residential establishment, have an ACO or vacant lot. And then the second one, they should have a setback of five feet from the right-of-way. This also... Okay. So it states one sign per location or business. This states we're also only allowed to direct one sign before the ordinance is violating our First Amendment rights in Pasco County. If citizens were able to abide by this ordinance, that means Pasco County residents would be unable to support any local candidate and the presidential candidate due to being limited to one sign and again, single-sided. This ordinance also takes away the citizens' abilities to place our presidential campaign signs on our front yards due to the fact every side is double-sided. As Pasco County citizens in Pasco County, the signed ordinance needs to be updated sooner than later and prior to our next election in November. It needs to be consistent and fair across the Board for all candidates. In addition, in previous elections, we obtained lists of where we were allowed signs to be located. This season, we did not receive a list, but continued to use the same locations. In the past, as long as the signs were behind the power lines, we were safe to go. Now, I did put signs out, which were behind the power lines, and they were removed. I spoke with code enforcement. Now they're being told they have to be five feet behind the right-of-way and on private property and behind their fence. But one must take out the property appraiser's map or the Pasco mapper map, measure online the distance from where the right-of-way is and back. As code enforcement was taking out tape measures to measure all of this. After discussion with code enforcement officer, I personally pulled up the property appraiser's website and made sure my signs were five feet behind the right-of-way. Now, my signs were removed a second time on Moon Lake Road. Code enforcement, a week later, was then told to stand down as more people and other candidates obtained their signs. A week later, and as of now, those signs are all up and down Moon Lake Road, but for one candidate, they are to follow one rule and one ordinance, and for others, they are not. With all this being said, it violates Pasco County's First Amendment rights. And to finish up...
Your time's up.
And lastly, what I would like to say is if we have code enforcement going out and pulling on people's personal property and pulling signs down and destructing and defacing people's personal property, that is a huge concern. Code enforcement should not have the right to destroy anybody's private property.
You've got to finish your comments. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Chair, I don't have anyone else signed up.
Is anyone in the audience wish to speak that has not spoken here today on any issue? Public comment? Okay. WebEx?
So one person previously had registered, but they're not signed in.
Okay.
So we have no one on WebEx right now.
So nobody on WebEx? All right. So this time, we will close public comment and we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I've got a pull sheet. C17 is pull and discuss. C28, pull and discuss. C39, pull and discuss. C42, pull. C43, pull. C46, pull. C... Starting over again. C5, pull and revise. C8, pull and revise. C20, withdraw. C38, withdrawn. C41, withdrawn. C44, withdrawn. Are there any other items that the Board wishes to pull at this time from the consent? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
We'll approve the consent agenda.
Okay. I got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll start with C17, pull and discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When going over this item with the County Administrator was brought up to, is this a mandatory fee? Do we get to look at what we're getting for coverage? And I didn't have the details, but maybe we got some more details today.
Hi, Amy Farrell, Budget Director with the Office of Management and Budget here in Pasco County. So to answer your first question, yes, this is an unfunded state mandate. Florida statute 406.08 is where local governments are instructed to fund the medical examiner. So we could... One option we would have would be to have a medical examiner dedicated to Pasco County, but we contract with the one in Pinellas and that we have found that's actually saved us some money over time.
Commissioner Whitman, you had to pull the toes, so...
I did. Commissioner Starkey says this is the first time...
A double pull.
Yeah. Okay. Right out of the gate. What were your questions? Well, I saw it. I guess similar to Commissioner Mariano, I mean, do we have $2 million worth of deceased folks that we are responsible for in Pasco County? Or are we offsetting some of Pinellas costs? That's just a lot of money and that's a lot of folks. And I don't think... I hope we don't have that many folks dying on our...
So it is just our deceased. And then, so it's those who pass in Pasco County. If they pass somewhere else, it's that local jurisdiction's responsibility. If they pass in jail, let's say that's not owned by the county but run by, I don't know, Zephyr Hills, Zephyr Hills pays that fee. So it's just county people passing in Pasco County and depending on what jail it might be our cost, it might not be our cost.
And they could live somewhere else, but if they pass in this county, that money's for that.
Right. And so to give you some, from a work quantity standpoint, so I pulled the July invoice. There were 43 autopsies, 78 cases, 424 cremation approvals, 44 scene responses, 62 transports, 28 body pouches. Please don't ask me what that is. I can do some research, but I don't know off the top of my head. 261 lab exams and 42 x-rays that the medical examiner performed for Pasco County.
Do we have a breakdown of these are visitors, residents, inmates? I just... $2 million is a lot and that's a lot of folks. I mean, the statistics you just read obviously are what they are. I just bit perplexed by the number and how to budget for that. I mean, I don't like this rule anyway with, you know, someone's in Hillsborough and they're up here visiting and something happens to them. Our taxpayer has to foot the bill. I don't know how we maybe...
The same happens if one of our county residents are down there.
Right. Or wherever. I just think it's a silly rule. Some areas have more visitors than others, right? And so I could just see, you know, more people, more issues, more chances of issues, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And part of the heartburn, and you've all heard me say, we talk about how dangerous US-19 is, pedestrian crossings, people getting killed. And I've asked, you know, do we do autopsies, find out if people are on drugs or whatever the case may be? We can never get that information, but I still got to pay a $2 million bill. So I wouldn't mind continuously doing more, getting more information on it. It is a very high number. It's gone up steadily, but if there's a way to... We can find a way to cut back to what's going on with it. I'd rather take a look, unless we're bound by time, we have to do this today.
Can that be done?
So what's before you today is an amendment to the fee schedule. So the contract would still be in place. If we didn't approve it, it would be with the current fee schedule and I can reach back out to the medical examiner and get some more information for you all.
Move to continue two weeks.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you, Amy.
Next is C28, pull and discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reason I pulled this item is I heard about this project coming up through the estuary that was going to be great for us. When I look at the numbers, it's a lot higher expense than I thought we were going to have to pay. Even the total bill is higher than I thought. You know, the grant funding from one part of it's 170, the next part's 150, and then we've got to put in 179 on top of that and 71 for design and permitting. We got a grant from the Part II money, the BP Restore Act money, for $8.5 billion. The first set of funding in that, they started out with the... In Tampa, at the bay itself, with some baffle boxes. I just talked to Maya from the estuary as I saw this item this morning, and I don't think it's a hurt to delay this a little bit. Maybe we can talk about it a little bit more, but if I can avoid spending $250,000 of Pasco County money and if the project gets delayed a year or two, I'm okay with that. It might even save the estuary some money for other things they can do with the money. There is a time constraint on these two grants that they have. But again, if it's an allocation from the consortium where they can get the whole thing and paid for, you might be able to save 250 grand for our taxpayers. And if you could talk more to it then.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jonah Meck, Environmental Manager for the Environmental Division of Public Works here in Pasco County. There would be no significant issues on our end to delay for a couple of weeks. You know, obviously, in order to stay on schedule, we wouldn't be able to delay too long, but in terms of the grant, I don't think that would be an issue. We will have to have some discussions with the estuary program about what other funding sources may be available. I think the restore money that you're referencing would be under their purview to distribute, so we'll have to see kind of how that works out with their timelines and their plan.
Well, I'm comfortable with the purview of their taking a look at it because frankly, it was my idea pushing this thing forward. It's something where the estuaries have joined together with a coastal component now, so I am not worried about getting the money from that part. Like I said, there would be a little delay to it, but I think it's worth taking a look at. So I'll move to continue two weeks on the item.
Okay. Got a motion?
Under discussion, Mr. Mariano. I did go to the event where we had the box. That was it, right?
Yeah, baffle box.
And the amount of junk that was from one side of the water to the other was amazing. So I hope... I do think it's a worthwhile project, so I hope we find a way to continue.
So if I could, on that one, there was a tubidy barrier. That was a different type of grant?
Oh, yeah, the baffle box.
This baffle box got three different containers to it?
Yeah.
That take the sediments, but then inside, it's got a container just like the other one where it takes all the trash ahead of time to it.
Yeah. And I've seen, you know, living on the water, I see the effects of not catching all that stuff.
I hate to delay it, but I want to make sure we explore this quickly. If we can save the money, then I want to save the money.
Okay.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I second.
No. Oh, you did? Oh, I thought I said...
Okay.
Thank you.
We got two seconds, but Ms. Yeager, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to C39 to pull and discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say this is a program a long, long time coming. Great to see that. It's going to help for senior housing, so it's going to be a great addition. I'll move approval.
Second. All right. Got a motion and a second on C39. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to C42 to pull. Nikki?
Mr. Chair, this is not to... It's really just pull to discuss. My office received the original document this morning. Not enough time to review it. Just ask that when you do approve it, just approve it subject to clerk review.
Okay. So I need a motion.
Move C42 subject to clerk's review.
Second.
And I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to C43, pull. Nikki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The same situation, just received the originals today. Just need time to review it, so please approve subject to clerk review.
Move C43 subject to clerk's review.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to C46.
All right. The similar situation, received the originals this morning, just need time to review. If you could please approve subject to clerk review.
Move C46 subject to clerk review.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you.
Move on to C5, pull and revise.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Nictaros Pitos, Planning Development Economic Growth. Item C5 is a task order for the Village of Pasadena Health's D.C. Credit Registry, and we are requesting to revise the scope of services currently on the agenda to accommodate updated IT technical requirements. The updated technical requirements are dated September 2nd, 2024, and add an additional 12% increase to the overall cost. So the five-year cost of the item goes from $768,160 to $791,324. There is funding within the VOPH Development Administration Review Liabilities Account to cover the increase in cost. And I have the updated IT requirements to submit to the record.
Move to receiving file.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Okay.
Chair?
Got a motion?
Go ahead. Just to speak this time, C5, you know, Terry and Mike, I'm very glad to see this with... As VOPH comes online, that we make sure everybody who's making significant investment into the project, that folks are protected and can make the best financial decision for them as possible. So I'm glad to see that we're making sure that, you know, these credits are managed appropriately. So with that, I'll move approval of C5.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move to C8, pull and revise. Mr. Baxter?
Good morning, Board. Andrew Baxter, Facility Management Director. Yes, there is a table on page two of the memo and it lists the construction at $6 million. The all-in total should actually equal $12 million for this entire project. Right now, we're just asking for the approval of the design, which is what this memo states, but that table is incorrect and needs to be adjusted.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman?
Well, what's the motion? So what was the motion?
So all in, the total is $12 million on the table.
The whole project to build the library. Mr. Chairman?
It says 6.5.
Mr. Mariano?
So I talked with the County Administrator. I was looking, pulling this item myself for a different reason, just to discuss it. When I saw the $6 million and had staff aware of it, that's why they pulled it for that reason. But, you know, coming up, we're going to look at the budget. It's in our budget items that are coming up for $12 million.
Right.
At this point, with all the things that are going on as far as the hurt people feeling, if we delay this project a year or two, might not be a bad thing to get through some tough times that people are feeling. So we're going to be talking about it later on today. So I was going to pull it just for that discussion, so I don't mind if we continue this for a couple of weeks. Go to meet after the meeting, but I think it opens up for the discussion point I was going to try to bring out anyway. So however jolly, maybe we could look at doing some phasing of the projects. I don't know, but anyway, I'm continuing waiting on this one. It is urgent to do this today, but I think if we have a budget discussion, I don't want But I think if we have a budget discussion, I don't want to pull, pull the trigger on this right away.
Mr. Baxter, we have time to do this.
So this is the agreement for the design. We could certainly, if the concern is really about the cost of the construction, we could certainly have that discussion with the design firm to see about how we could phase that over time. But we would like to move forward with the design at this time, which is the.
And the only issue I see that you, when you, when you wait and times are, but people are looking at that library, your citizens in your district are very much wanting that. The more, longer you wait, the more that hospital could cost you. So you actually save a certain amount of money by trying to push forward rather than trying to hold out, so.
I also think, you know, if you get, if you have design work done and completed, it enhances your ability to have shovel-ready projects. So if additional funding sources were to become available, you've got a project. So in other words, spending the small amount of design, again, to Andrew's point, if the board does have budget concerns, they can address that as we go, as well as having a potentially shovel-ready project should grants or other things be available too in the future. It's good to have the design work done, is my point.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move approval. But I do, and we do have this, I would like to have a discussion with them right at the start.
Ten-four.
Move approval?
So I got a motion?
Commissioner Starkey seconded.
Oh, Mr. Starkey, seconded. Thank you. I got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed five zero. Move on to C twenty. Withdraw. C thirty-eight, withdraw. C forty-one, withdraw. This is the easy part. C forty-four, withdraw. Okay. So that takes care of the consent agenda. Now I got to get my vote in the right place. There are no resolutions today. Okay. All right. We go to the regular agenda and start with item R forty-seven, presentation only. Oh, there's my buddy. Ralph, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Ralph Lehrer, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer. This morning, at the day, as I have placed the material I'm speaking about at your seat. So this is just kind of a, an update. Where are we with the 2025 legislative agenda? August twenty, I mean, August first, in preparation for the 2025 legislative session, which begins March fourth, 2025, I asked the organization to provide me with any funding initiatives or policy proposals they would like for the board to consider for the legislative agenda for 2025. Today, September third, we're having our legislative discussion with you all, discuss the timeline, those policies and proposals that I've received to date, and any funding initiatives I have received to date. The plan is then on October fifteenth, we will have a board workshop. And this will be the opportunity for all those items that have come before us. We'll have staff within the organization come and talk to you about those. So you can take those into consideration to see if this is what you want to include on the 2025 agenda. So we'll have policy proposals, funding initiatives, and then you'll decide on those initiatives to include on the 2025 agenda.
Mr. Chair? I have not sent my list in yet.
And, and I know that.
And I wasn't in.
This is just the start.
This is just the start, yeah.
District three didn't get anything, didn't get to ask for anything last year, so.
I was going to get there. I was going to get there. This is a year to ask. This is a year that we can probably say we won't have any caps on the number that we submit. If we're going to ask, we're going to ask these next few years because we're in the posture with the Senate. Our, Senator Hooper is going to be the appropriations chair. And he said the same thing. If we're going to ask, might as well ask in the next few years.
Of course, he can't be the one to do the asking.
So let me, let me tell you what I've, I've been working on. So.
It is on my list.
In District one.
It is on my list, if you let me get to that.
Oh, well, when you get to it, then yes.
I'll get to it. I'll, I'll, I'll. So, so that'll happen on October fifteenth. The next thing, and this is new this year, for November thirteenth or fifteenth, landing on a day. So we can find a location. We will then meet with our legislative delegation and have a workshop there. That way, we can interact, kind of discuss with them.
What's the date of the show?
We're looking at November thirteenth or fifteenth to do that. And then the location to be determined. So this will be the opportunity where we sit down with our legislative delegation and go over those. I know they have some issues that they have on their plate. So again, we haven't, we haven't gone to print yet. This, this will be the last bite of the apple to have that discussion of what you all would like to see on the agenda and then get their input at that meeting. My plan is then by, we receive all that information, we'll have review, we'll do cleanup. And then by the beginning of December, I put December second just as a date to have on there. I will then go to print. Committee weeks start in January through February. And then, like I said, session starts March fourth and ends May second. So to date, the next sheet that we're going to talk about are the funding initiatives, which includes the issue, Chairman, that you've included on there and want to discuss, and our policy proposals. If you want any information, my plan will be, and after I've received all the information, the proposals and the initiatives, we'll review them. Mr. Carvalla and senior staff and I will review. And then I will send those out. So you'll have those in advance before the workshop. So you can then go through those. But again, I'll just go through these briefly. If there's one you want to discuss thorough, Mr. Chair or any of the other commissioners, I'm happy to do that. So from fire rescue, we received a funding initiative for a new decon truck, a new air vent truck, a heavy rescue truck. They've asked for starting to build for fire station number five. A new shelter expansion for our veterinary clinic with animal services. A new water, our wastewater treatment facility in the Lakucha area. An East Pasco Emergency Shelter Recreation Complex and Community Center. This is the one, if you'd like to go ahead and discuss now, we can do that.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and discuss. So I know you've all probably heard the fact that Dade City was a little disappointed in Pasco County because we didn't pay for, pay a big part of center across the tracks over at Irving, James Irving Rec Center over there. The problem was, is we felt like we couldn't get enough children to go across a new four-lane highway and railroad track to get to use that park. So with Commissioner Woodard from, from Dade City and Keith, Keith Wiley, with recreation, we met in my office and we decided we will work together with the city to build a new center. And it first came up about using Watson Park. And, and in the process, that was, that was Olympic Swim and Pool. It was going to be basketball courts and some other items for recreation for, for in Dade City that us share with Dade City. And they had funds to be able to put, put part of the money in. Then it came up with, Andrew Baxter came in our meeting, later meeting. Ms. Woodard was not there at the time, but suggested that maybe we put this, this recreation center and shelter at Fort King and Florida Avenue where the VA is right now, where the VA offices. And let the VA be a part of being in that building all the time and fix it where there are no sound from the recreation part that would affect any VA coming in. We don't want that to happen. So we would make sure that happened. But it'd also be a shelter for the east side, very summer-sized and all as, as a Fasano Center on the west side. As, I know I'm not the only one that's heard them, but Randy Maggard and Danny Burgess both been talking about, we needed a shelter, we needed a place for a venue for us to have meetings on the east side, other than this building. And this fills all those bills that we're all talking about.
What, what is the crossroad? Fort King and what?
Fort King is where the VA building is.
I don't know.
Fort King and Florida Avenue. It's right, and it's right next to Land Elementary School and Pasco Junior High School, right in that area. So if we needed extra parking on that, and, and the county owns the land. If we needed extra parking, we could reach out to the schools that are close by in the evening and say if we needed extra parking there.
And all those are good, but let me ask you, is that part of our parks' master plan? Or are we jumping?
Well, it's, it's part of a, a plan with that. And we'll get Keith to come and speak to it.
We've got a vetted parks' master plan. Not that I don't think this is vetted.
I understand, but this is part of, and Keith can come speak, speak for parks. And it's also an emergency shelter, just like Fasano. We've been having outcry for that for a long time. And then we've always been trying to find a place that we could actually have, that we could have meetings too, off campus here.
So it's multi-purpose?
So we'd have that. So it'd be multipurpose, be a lot of recreation. You're tying into a lot of students, some people here in Dade City. And, and Dade City, I want to talk to Ms. Woodard. She's on board. I'm sure the chief would be on board. Chief Walters, I've spoke to him about that issue. But it's, you know, what got me started is first, they, they talked like we didn't want to help them in, in the city. But the fact of it, we got started in thinking about it, it's something good for all of us.
Well, sure, all of us.
It's not just, just because it's here in my district. But it's for everybody on this board, we get this finally done. So Keith, if you want to, you can kind of tell some of that, how we got started with the city.
Sure. So Keith Wiley, Director of Parks and Recreation, National Resources. Commissioner Starkey to answer your question. Yes, it is included in the capital plan that was tied to the impact fee study that the board approved last year. So it's not an additional project. It would be, we'd be moving it from the Berks Park location to be co-located to benefit, you know, quite honestly, just more residents ultimately in the Dade City greater area. And, I mean, Commissioner Oakley, I think you, you described the history perfectly. We were talking to the city of Dade City about seeing if we can partner with them to assist their improvements over at the park that they, that actually they own, that we manage. A lot of discussions with the community residents. And ultimately, I think this is, this is going to be, as Commissioner Oakley stated, the best for everyone at the end of the day, if we can get it off the ground.
So I hope that, I, I don't think I was, I was not a county commissioner when you built the Fasano shelter. I think it was part of the LPA or on the school board. And I remember, but I remember Commissioner Mariano wanting that roof to be two feet higher so they could play basketball. And I was very unfortunate that the, that the county commission did not approve to go two feet higher. So that, that could have been used for that. So I hope in this building that we don't make that mistake if this is able to move forward.
That's already included.
Yeah. So the, the general concept moving forward would be that it would be a gymnasium, double gymnasium with activity rooms, multifunctional throughout the year. So that way, we don't have a forty thousand square foot facility sitting vacant, two miles or a mile and a half away from another thirty-five thousand square foot facility. So just again, combining all the uses and we won't, we won't. Andrew and I will make sure that we don't, we don't make that mistake, at least not on our watch.
Another question kind of worth thought. You know, we seem to get vetoed a lot. And does this have a higher chance of going through if it's coming from the city of Dade City than Pasco County? I don't know. I'd look at the veto history.
Randy, Randy Maggard, representative, has got it on his number one list. Danny Burgess with the Senate has it on his list. Mr. Hooper is aware of it. And also I've got Summer with Gus Bill Rax's office, and we got VA a part of it. They're looking for some grants. They're reaching out now to look for some grants to help in funding of this building. And so all the players that need to be players, you're also a part of it, so.
Did you reach out to Representative Steele for the house?
I did not, because it was Randy Maggard.
It's Randy, Randy's district.
Randy's house is in his district. And then, and they've been talking about a shelter over here in a, in a venue for us for two or three years. It just so happened, we were sitting around a table in my office, and it came to me, I said, well, this is a perfect place to have that venue and also have for shelter. And it's high enough in basketball, and have it be high enough for basketball has always been a part of it. And how I really got started on this was the fact that Ralph came to me and he says, oh, we're not going to do five projects. We're going to, we're going to allow y'all to have three. I said, well, I'm going to pick a good one then. I don't want to pick one, one and just, like picking a sidewalk when it's not approved. That, that bothers me. This is something we all be a part of. And even if you have another project somewhere in the county, and I would think we would, this is a very big project that stands for all of us, so.
So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and just correct one little thing. So like we did last year, we started out originally saying we're only going to have three projects, one for the central, one for the east, one for the west. We ended up with four because the state said, we have one that we would like you to take over. So we ended up with four. That fourth one was one that ended up getting funded, where our other projects did not. Again, as I mentioned.
Put it under Dade City.
As I mentioned at the beginning, I, I, I think we'll just, we won't set a cap like that. So, you know, one in each area or additional projects. We could have multiple projects this year. If we're going to ask, we're going to ask in these next two years.
Can they go in, under Pasco County and Dade City?
No, we don't, we don't.
Here's what I will say about that project.
I just wanted to go through if it's going in.
Here, on this type of a project, this is one where we can anticipate funding from local, both county and city, state and federal, because of all the activities that will be done in that, in that building and who it represents. So it's a, it's a three-way partnership.
Also included in USDA.
Yeah. And so, again, the federal. So, but, but it truly is a county. We want the county to, will own the property and own the building, so not the city. They'll have some other ask, I'm sure.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and move on. The next one is not really a, an ask that we will be seeking, but we'll include it on our agenda. And that's for the Hudson Library. The plan is we will be applying, once it's out on the street, for the library construction grant program. We did have a library on last year, but as you may remember, the governor ended up vetoing that pot of money. So all those people who applied and were to receive the grants did not get those funds. So we just want to make sure that the legislature is aware that we'll have a project on there, or maybe even two. The next one, received a request in for the expansion of Sunlake Boulevard for two, from two lanes to four lanes. This is a metro project. Proposed.
When we start doing these, I want to see these on a map to see what we're talking about.
Okay. And then the next one, proposed two-lane road connection with Overpass Bridge. This is a kind of a follow-up metro did. They didn't get all the funding they asked for this last session, so they're going back in again. Proposed Overpass Bridge for three million dollars for one bridge.
I'm going back to the metro Sunlake Boulevard ask. First of all, as you know, and I've said it, if we're going to, if we're going to be asking for a project, it needs to be not a developer project, but a county project. But is it not more important for us to connect Sunlake to fifty-four than to widen the little bit that's, the bit that's there? I mean, what's, what's a priority for us?
We have some contractual obligations to do widening as part of the Angeline and the Hoppin deal. The connection of Sunlake two fifty-four is in the works. I, Nick, maybe I'll give a brief update on that. I agree with you. It is a priority to have that grid completed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick, you're in, county engineer. The answer to the question, do we want to widen Sunlake and do we want to connect it to fifty-four, is yes. We want both. And we are simultaneously pursuing both. We do have a contractual obligation, as Mike noted, to reimburse Metro for any portions of Sunlake that are widened within the Angeline project prior to the end of 2028. After that, we give them mobility fee credits for widening if it occurs because of their work. We are also adding the extensions down to Bud Vexly Parkway into our five-year CIP, which is part of your capital improvements program that is scheduled for approval.
Say, I'm sorry, say that again?
We are adding the construction of Sunlake Boulevard from the southern Angeline border
Yeah.
south, all the way to Bud Vexly Parkway.
Okay.
As a two-lane road as part of our. As a two-lane road as part of our capital improvement program. Program meaning we will do design in year two, right-of-way acquisition if necessary in year three, and then construction beginning in years four and five.
Did we move that up in our priority list at the MPO? Is that number one on the MPO?
The, so I'm gonna be candid with you. The interaction between the list of priority projects that the MPO board adopts and the approval of a capital improvement program that this commission adopts is complicated. The inclusion of a project, especially a county road project like Sunlake Boulevard on the list of priority projects that the MPO makes that project eligible for potential federal dollars and/or state grant funds that we could ask for, such as a county incentive grant program or a transportation regional incentive program, SIGB or TRIP funds that we could ask for from District 7. So it's important that we have our project, the extension of Sunlake, on the list of priority projects approved at the MPO. That, but approval on the list of priority projects does not guarantee funding. It makes you eligible for money, but it doesn't guarantee that you are going to receive money from the state or from the federal government. What we're doing with the capital improvement program is we are allocating the dollars entrusted to Pasco County to specific projects over the next five years.
Okay.
So we're saying we have, we have mobility fees, we have gas taxes, we have TIF funding, we have penny-for-Pasco funding available to us. We think we can accomplish the project with those resources, but we would gladly accept state and federal money for the extension of Sunlake Boulevard. Should we choose to pursue those funds, we haven't yet, so I'm, I'm looking at our county attorney and saying, we have not submitted an application for federal funding for Sunlake Boulevard because that, there are consequences to declaring that at this point in time. So we are intended to construct it with either county resources or state resources at this time. And we're, we're going to continue to advance that in our five-year CIP.
All right, so we had in our five-year CIP, the widening of Trinity Boulevard, and it was taken out. And no one could give me a date, and I'm telling you, the residents of Trinity are wondering what happened. And there's a lot more traffic on that. There's a lot of traffic on Trinity Boulevard, as all of y'all know. And the road has actually fallen apart. So I got, I got a question on how we found money for Sunlake, but where's Trinity? And then I also have the question on Rangeland, which DOT asked us to accelerate because it is the reliever for State Road 54. So where are we on, on Rangeland then? I know we're doing a route study, but I haven't heard or seen anything of it in a long time.
We are, we are in full speed ahead on the route study. In this case, it is a project development and environmental study being done compliant with federal regulations to allow us the opportunity, should we be able to secure them, to use federal funds on the Rangeland Boulevard project. Again, not guaranteeing we'll get money, but we are positioning ourselves to be eligible.
See, this is part of my question to you and to Ralph about, and I had lunch with Hooper about, we're trying to, you know, trying to figure out if I should be asking for Rangeland, which will relieve 20 to 30% of the traffic on 54. As you know, 54 shut down last year with the oil spill. It was a disaster since there's no other road but one road, State Road 54. If something happens and it gets blocked, so. Can we ask for design money and will that, would that mess up the federal grant application? I know we tried to cut it in pieces and they said, no, you gotta do it all as one to, to apply for a federal grant. So where are we, what do I need to do?
As far as Rangeland goes, we are in the process of doing, we're concluding the, the planning study, the planning, project development environmental study. That's going from essentially east of Gunn Highway to use a locally known western terminus all the way to.
Bexley Village.
Bexley Village Boulevard, yes. So we're gonna get across Sun Coast Parkway, build a bridge over Sun Coast Parkway and get all the way to Bexley Village with that project. Design is funded in our capital program over the next five years. Design is funded in year two, right-of-way acquisition in year three, and then again, construction in years four and five. So we are planning to accomplish that project with, again, county resources. Now, the reason we do appropriations is because all of the predicted resources over the next five years are just that, they're predicted resources. So we think we will have enough to accomplish those two projects with the money that we anticipate receiving over the five-year period. But if we can secure, secure state funds or federal funds to reduce our costs, first of all, it allows us more flexibility with the actual resources that we receive. So if we get less than we were predicting, we can still build the project because of the federal and state dollars we secure externally. Second of all, it allows us to do additional projects, and this kind of brings back to the conversation about Trinity Boulevard, where we have a lot of infrastructure to construct as we try, as we're racing to keep up with growth and development in Pasco County. We are constructing transportation facilities countywide, northeast, southeast, northwest, central, all, all over the place. There are projects competing for dollars. And so when we present to you a capital improvement program, we are doing our best based on the data we have on approved development and existing use of the roads to show you where we think those dollars should be put in the next five years. It's a complicated process, it is absolutely data-driven. When we present a list of projects to you, we think that that is the best allocation of resources, but we also acknowledge that this is a, it's an interactive process and that you have your ear to the ground, you know where infrastructure needs are maybe being overlooked by data.
Yeah.
And so you're hearing from constituents, hey, what about Trinity Boulevard? And so in response to that, we've done a very detailed analysis, and I've got it in my inbox, I'm supposed to be looking through it, of the intersections along Trinity Boulevard from Pinellas County all the way up to 54 to determine where can we add turn lanes and/or through lanes to make that corridor operate at its maximum efficiency. We intend to do a partnership project with Public Works to say, let's add capacity at the intersections and resurface the roadway to provide a comfortable driving experience for the people on the corridor. We are working on that.
So.
That's in the pipeline as well.
Since Senator Hooper's number one project that he wants to get done is fixing the Eastlake corridor, that this Trinity Boulevard seems to tie in with that fix. And maybe that's, Ralph, maybe what I should be looking at is, so are you far enough along that that can be my legislative ask? Because he's, I know he's got it in for Pinellas County for Eastlake and Tarpon Springs Boulevard, you know, backs up. You go, it's seven lights before you can go through.
Sure.
So y'all haven't experienced this, you don't want to experience this, but if you live in Pasco and you have to go work in Pinellas County, it's a disaster. It's, and no one will come have dinner with Senator Hooper because it's the same thing in the reverse. So he's working on a fix, I think they're gonna three-lane, or they're doing something down there. And I'm just wondering if we shouldn't tie in.
We can certainly expedite the definition of a scope of work for Trinity Boulevard so that if you wanted to consider that as part of your appropriations request, you could do so.
That would be.
I'm gonna make one more comment. I, I have provided information to your county administrator and hopefully we'll have opportunity to share with you the impact of asking for appropriations on projects that we don't have
That's right.
designed.
Oh.
And so, you know, just setting expectations where if we ask for an appropriation for a transportation infrastructure project that we haven't begun design on yet, the process to getting that project designed and then awarded for construction is time-consuming.
That's what I was wondering.
It's, it's gonna be a two-to-three-year timeframe. Whereas if we ask for appropriations for projects that we have loaded into the pipeline and that are more, much closer to shovel-ready, meaning design is complete or near-complete and we don't have to buy property from anyone in order to go to construction, we're much more, we're much better positioned to consume appropriated funds in, in a construction contract in the timeframe that they would be available.
Okay, so we have one that's on a design and almost ready to go, which is the overpass, the bike pad overpass at 54 and Sun Coast. Can we ask for help with a portion of that and then take the money that we had in there and put it somewhere else? Is that a smarter idea?
Absolutely, we are, we're close to needing construction funds for the shortfall at those two overpasses, at both 54 and at 52. So we have, just as a reminder to the governing board, to the commissioners, we, we have an agreement with FDOT where we have paid upfront for the estimated cost of design and construction for pedestrian overpasses for the Sun Coast Trail as they cross State Road 54 and as they cross State Road 52. We've given them approximately $10 million for each of those two locations because that was the anticipated cost to design and construct those bridges.
Way back when?
The agreement we have with FDOT, which I think was executed in 2018, but again, I'm, keep in mind, I, I joined you in 2023, so some of my, you know, my history is not as sharp on the older stuff. It obligates us to pay the shortfall. If design ends up being more, or in construction ends up being more than DOT, when they get a bid back for construction of those two bridges, can say to us, here's the bid amount, here's how much we have from you, the difference is X, and we need you to write us a check for X in a very short amount of time. That's what our agreement obligates us to do right now. If we were to seek an appropriation for those two and they are intended to go to construction, receive bids and be let for the bidding process later this year for 52. Maybe spring of, at this point later.
I think 52 jumped ahead of 54.
I think 52 is going to be in the summer of '25, and 54 is anticipated to be in the later part of '25, December of 2025. So if we are to be notified at that time of, of shortfalls and we have a legislative appropriation saying, here, here's $4 million or here's $6 million, we could use that money to plug the shortfall and then instead of having to write that check out of our county resources, we could put those county resources toward another project.
The last thing, I'm sorry, but the last thing I needed to know about was the sidewalk that was asked about last year. And I, Ralph, I could not tell from what you sent me what the heck is going on because my ask last year that didn't make it into our county, but, project list was the sidewalk from, I think Trinity Boulevard up to Mitchell, Mitchell High School and Mitchell Middle, or Seven Springs Middle. I don't understand, because when I look, I, I see a sidewalk, so. But there's a, there's a mess going on there now that they've changed the times and our office is getting a lot of emails about traffic backing up on Little Road for a long ways. And, and that, so Ralph, what was the project last year?
I will hear with Nick after this and then we'll, we'll discuss that project. It was one that I received, and she is in one of this area.
Okay.
And basically providing an item.
And the parents are saying there's no safe way for those kids to go because there's no crossing guards. And so, and maybe it's just as simple as getting them some crossing guards and they'll feel comfortable using what's there. I don't know, but I need to get with you guys because literally we got maybe 50 emails on it.
We'll get with you.
Let's go on, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it'd be a good idea, and I've talked with Megat Harding from the school board about this, is let's get together with the school board, maybe district by district, and kind of find out what are their priorities as well? And let's go find out work together with them this year in Tallahassee, go and to try to get these sidewalk projects done that need to get done.
Yeah, and I am concerned that they're not building the sidewalks they're supposed to build. They're all over, all over, they don't have the sidewalks in front of their property and they're supposed to build their sidewalks. So, I mean, we're supposed to connect to them.
So I think with all of us together, I mean, for example, Shady Hills, we had a senior project coming in, Del Webb. We had to make from their property all the way up to the schools. There's still a gap going to the north because there's nothing for development coming in. But I think, like I said, all these things, sitting down together and going as a united front to say, we need this stuff done, might help us get capital money we otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't touch.
But, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, Commissioner, there is a working group that is established where we do work on that and we do chip away at school board's priorities, but more is always better.
I think a little bit, little bit robust, especially we align with our own school board member districts to kind of, maybe each pick two or three that are the most important to us to, to go forward.
To, to that point, there's a list, which is what we've been advocating on. Parkway just happened to be the, the most dangerous school where Pineview Middle, I mentioned where there were two phases. Second phase was vetoed. And then I think the number three on the list was in Commissioner Starkey's district. So I, I'm gonna support sidewalks every year until I'm no longer a commissioner and just chip away at the school board's list from one to 25 and wherever it falls in the, in whoever's district, however, but that, that's how I'll be supporting that.
Do they have a list?
Yes, yep.
Oh, I'd love to see that list.
But I know one on Pasco Road is a sidewalk that we're actually doing within that Pasco Road widening. I think we're doing that, that sidewalk there.
Old Pasco?
Yeah. Yeah, we're doing that, I saw that not too.
Sidewalk and a multi, multimodal.
Yeah, yeah. So, anything else, Ralph, for me?
Yeah, I was gonna get to the policy. So policy proposals, I so far have received County inmate medical costs. This is one we did last year. We also submitted this to FAC this year for their discussion. I spoke with them the other day, so in a few weeks, they'll be having their policy and innovation meeting and I'll be up there for that. I know Commissioner Starkey will be up there, you were still debating on that. So we have a couple of issues. The other issue that we submitted to FAC was 911 fee increase. My counterpart, Pinellas, reached out to us and said, this is an issue we're submitting. Would you all be willing to submit it to? Ran it by the organization and they came back and said, yes, it's a good, good issue. We've been bleeding every year paying out of general fund to pay for the 911 issues that have been capped by the state at 40 cents since 2014. Indexing local option fuel tax, same kind of scenario with 911. This is one where the state has an indexing on their local option, or their, their fuel taxes, but we do not. So theirs go up every year, ours do not. This is what helps pay for your infrastructure. So where do you get it from when you have that shortfall? Your general revenue. We had a proposal submitted by our pedestrian, Commissioner Starkey, you're aware of this one, the president of BPAC, is it?
The president of, oh, oh, yeah, on, yeah, that, Brian, is it Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good one.
A pedestrian safety issue that he submitted. Again, these will be issues that we'll discuss at the workshop. We'll have people there to talk about it in depth. So again, I will get those to you in the next week or so, so you'll have those readily available so you can research to review. The other one you're familiar with, this is what we weren't able to accomplish last year, and that's the live local land use exemption. We got the, the tax exemption portion taken care of, so now we're gonna go back in and address this issue. I think our legislators now realize that and are willing to possibly carry it within our own delegation. So that's a good thing.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ralph, we definitely need to talk about this at fact because there are more and more counties that are understanding the challenges, and I think we'll have more help this time. And we shouldn't be the tip of the spear again, but this is, you know, as you know, this is why we were vetoed so badly last year, and that's why I was suggesting Dade City.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we need to see if we could, we need to fix this, but let's see if we can be a coalition and not just a little man carrying the weight of the state on our shoulders.
Yeah.
Right?
Ralph, one, one question.
Sure.
You know, last year there was a Metro product for a walkway. Was that part of our safety issues for that walkway? Because I did not think it was, but it came through the county.
It did come through the county, but no, that was within Metro's property on Angeline.
So that was something.
And that was a pedestrian bridge.
What I like to, I don't, I don't mind having a project they have, but I wanted one that, like Nick was talking about, if, if we're obligated to pay for some of these things, I want those asks to be, if Metro's asking, I want them to be together rather than, than one way or the other, just. I mean, we can ask for our things, but if Metro's gonna ask for something special.
They can't.
It, they do.
That's because we sign on.
You remember they got their sidewalk across the roadway last year?
And they submitted those with our name on that.
Yes, that's the problem.
They submitted those with our name, Pasco County's name on it, yeah. So, so I've asked them, they will participate as well so they can come and talk to you about those projects that they are seeking for next year.
The only issue I had on that one was the fact that they, if you talk to a legislator up there or something, and we didn't get any things, they said, oh, yeah, you did, you got this walkway across these roads. Well, I didn't think that was something we were asking.
Well, there's, there's walkways to nothing because they didn't, no trails, no sidewalks, so I don't understand it.
So I don't, my problem is I don't want to see us lose sidewalks that we need for safety of children and our citizens
Yeah.
over something like that. If it's something that fits both uses and we're both, we're obligated as well, I don't mind that, that's fine.
Yeah, and I think.
That way we're working together, not separate.
Yes, sir, to Ralph's point, they're gonna be at the table there, it sounds like, which, which is good. We haven't had that kind of cooperation in a couple of years.
All right.
I have to backtrack, I missed the second one, I've got a policy issue.
I have to backtrack, I missed the second one, I've got a policy issue.
Ralph, just a quick, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Back to the live local as well, Regional Planning Council, I think one of the reasons I was nominated was because of our stance on live local. I think we should try to reach out together to do a presentation with all the regional planning councils as well, including the meeting that comes up in January.
I'll get with David Engel, and David Engel's saying about that.
Okay, thanks.
I did jump over one, another policy issue is for a public records exemption for misdemeanor and probation. Always thought they already included, but apparently they were not, so we'll, we'll try to go in and see if we can get that done this year.
And this one on code, we gotta get that through.
And then the last one, we're revisiting the code in municipal enforcement to allow for anonymous complaints. I, I think even our legislators are hearing now from their own constituency about the problems, and I think it might be an issue that they might, are willing and are receptive to revisit this year. Don't know if it'll pass, but willing to revisit. And that's it as of right now. Any other questions?
That's a lot of policy from us.
And that's a good thing.
That's our job.
That we have increased, you know, through the years, and have come up with more ideas, and I like to see that, that's, you know, rather than just asking for money, you know, but we see day to day, you know, whether it be changes that have occurred already, that we need to go back and revisit, that have had a negative impact on our county, or we see ways that, just tweaking the legislative, in the, in the language of law, will, will help us to do our jobs smoother.
Chair?
Chair?
Yes.
Thanks, Chair. Ralph, we're working with budget folks on a spreadsheet that kind of lists all of our unfunded state mandates separately, as we go through this budget process. It's gonna be interesting to see what we find, and maybe out of that, some of these unfunded mandates can bring policy discussions with our, with our folks, and show what it's actually, it's costing, so it'll be a fun exercise, and I'm hopeful something good may come out of that.
It really is, and the good thing is, is our, our budget people, they stay on top of this every year, because they know it happens. The cost shifts down from the state, back to the local area, and, you know, they can at least tell the constituency, we did not raise taxes or fees, local government, however you have to take care of that, it's your problem now, it's not our problem. And it builds up over time, and so, these are issues that then whittle away at general revenue that you all deal with, with your regular operating fees, and, and then you, how do you make that shortfall up every year? So it'll be a good discussion.
Hence the double pool this morning.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Now we'll move on to the next, our item is R.48, and presentation only.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Dullis, Organizational Performance Management. I always like to start this presentation with a little story, and some of you heard it four years ago, but bear with me, it makes a pretty decent point. The, oh, let's see, change my time of slide, okay, gotcha. So I grew up in Oakland, I know Commissioner Starkey remembers this story, because she had similar experiences, but as I grew up, there was an old theater that we used to go to on rainy days, and it was an old theater, because they only played the movies that you wouldn't see at the, at the new theater, B-movies, I think they called them at the time, and it was kind of nice as a kid, you could spend a couple bucks and for all day, all day long in the rain, instead of sitting outside, you could watch movies. Now, I don't remember any of the movies that I saw there, what I do remember is that these were old enough to have what they call movie tone newsreels embedded in them, little black and white blurbs of different things going on, a lot of World War footage, there was one, there was a cat playing ping pong, but the one I remember the most was of a, an archer, and his name was Howard Hill. Now, at the time, twenties, thirties, forties, he was the best archer in the entire world. I saw in this footage where he could be taken out to a grassy patch, put a target fifteen feet in front of him, take out an arrow, draw it back, and he would hit the bullseye every single time, he was absolutely incredible. I actually saw him take out a second arrow once, and he split the first arrow right down the center of the shaft. He was that good, he was amazing, the very best. Now, I'll make a bold prediction here, I could take any one of you at the dais, or anyone in this room, I could take you out here to the grass, I could set up a target fifty feet from you, give you bow and arrow, and in two hours' time, I could hit any of you hitting the target more consistently than Howard Hill could on his very best day. Two hours, any one of you.
Challenge accepted.
Provided, provided two things, Commissioner, provided two things. One, we blindfold Howard Hill. Second, we turn him around, so he does not know in what direction the target lies. Silly, right? Here's the point.
I thought you were gonna give Mariano a crossbow with a scope, that's kind of.
Good solution. So, kind of a silly story, right, but the, the point is this, no matter how good you are, how can you hit a target you cannot see? The strategic plan is the target for this organization, it is your target that we are going to execute, and the bullseye is a premier county, so that's what we're gonna talk about today. It all starts with our mission, serving our community to create a better future. Sounds simple, but it's what we do here in Pasco County Government, it's why we exist, it's what the community depends on us to do. What we realize is that in order to have this kind of better future, three things, foundational pieces have got to be in place. First, we have to be able to provide a sustainable foundation for health, safety, and mobility, that foundation is everything, and if you look across the fifty-eight lines of business we do here at Pasco County Government, most of them are focused on providing that foundation. So really, if you, if you consider the sustainable foundation is the piece that has to be in place, or you have no community at all. Now, once you do have this foundation in place, the second thing you can do is begin to enhance quality of life. So we are able to provide equitable human services, social, cultural, and recreational opportunities for all, no matter where you are on the spectrum, from having a particular need to wanting a park or library or something like that. Now, we also know that the underpinning for all of this, the underlying support, is economic prosperity, and so we define that as supporting a sustainable increase in community income and investment, economic diversification, and expanded opportunities for all. So that's individuals as well as businesses. So these three pieces have got to be in place to ensure the future of Pasco County. So how do we develop the plan? Well, first, we, we found it kind of interesting that Pasco County really exists to meet people at their point of need, and the way that this particular plan is set up does exactly that, you can see it, it lines up perfectly with Maslow's hierarchy of needs, so I think as a county government, that's, that's incredibly responsible that we're able to do that. So where did the plan come from? How, how did it get designed? We put together a team of incredibly talented people, three of them are actually in the room here today, that have been working on this for several months, you met our consultant, Patrick Iberi, he worked with each of you early on in the process, and the challenge, or the, the charge of this team, was to look at the three focus areas, and help define and understand what our biggest challenges are to achieving those three big pieces, and I mean immediate challenges. So we had a workshop with all of you to help define that, you gave us great ideas and thoughts, allowed us to then go back and do an environmental scan, so that we could verify and validate what the causation was behind some of the issues that we're seeing, and then from that, we needed to build some sort of adaptation. In other words, the strategic plan is a way for us to address the challenges that we are facing right now to creating that better future, and that's exactly what this team has done. So the basic setup of the plan, very simple, it starts with a mission and vision, and those are achieved through the three priority areas. Now, the next step, as I mentioned, was to determine what the challenges were. You, as a board, gave us your thoughts on this, you'll see they're up there, we've run them back by you again to validate that we're on the right track with that, but when we look at the creating a thriving community, what are our biggest challenges that we're facing right now as an organization? Well, really, in the face of rapid growth, it is maintaining the demands of public health and safety, that's, that's just enormous, you hear about the fire stations needed, you hear about response times, you hear a lot of, about the roads, half of what we talked about today is really about that, in the face of growth. And of course, the idea of being a resilient and sustainable county well into the future is also another big challenge that we're facing right now. Those are the pieces that challenge that most foundational part of the strategic plan. Now, when it comes to enhancing quality of life, there's some big pieces we've got to address, too, we've got to reduce homelessness, we've got to address that, it's not going away, we know that, we see that, you hear about it, again, we even, we even hear about it today. The, the other part of it is to realize that, that for a lot of folks, we want, we want equitable services, so even access and availability of the type of services that people want, cultural, educational, recreational, social opportunities, we've got, we've got to put a greater focus on that, to make sure these things are available to, to folks in their point of need, whatever that need happens to be. And of course, you also heard, heard some of this today, the, the challenge of balancing the natural environment and urbanization, it's a big challenge. So, these again are big pieces, they are strategic by nature, they're the, they're the what we intend to do. In a minute, I'll talk about the how tactically we intend to do that. When you look at driving economic prosperity for all, big pieces right there, meeting affordable and attainable housing needs, we know that's a huge issue, we've got it, we've got to focus on, on changing that. We still have stressed communities, you heard some of that today as well, we've got to address the needs there, and we want to do more to support small business and entrepreneurship, because of course, if we talk about creating jobs and creating economic sustainability, that's a huge piece of it. So, these are the challenges we had shared with you, we, we feel very strong that those are validated. So, there's the, the what we intend to do. When we get a little more granular, we have to set the targets, going back to that, that trying to hit the bullseye, and the goals that we have are designed to do exactly that. For each of the three focus areas, there are three challenges that are going to be addressed by three goals. These goals are what we intend to achieve between now and 2030, so we'll talk more about that in a second. But just to walk you through these, when you look at thriving community, we intend to improve the capacity and capability of emergency service responses, there's gonna be a lot of tactical pieces that make that actually happen, you heard some of that today, additional fire stations, those type of things. Protect vulnerable critical assets and communities from extreme conditions, that's what the Office of Strategy and Sustainability is focused on, you've seen some of the projects that we have going on right away, we want to ensure that Pasco County is in good shape well into the future. And another one that we realize is that so much of what we want to do is going to be around policy, and, and some policy updates and changes, so we want to ensure that the 2050 gets done pretty quick, and we want to speed up the land development code, that that, it's time for that. You hear the, you hear the conversations all the time, we want to get to where our policies are consistent with where we want to go as a county, so we want to speed up the process of redeveloping that. As far as the quality of life goes, we want to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurrent. So there, again, it's, it's something that we have to have a very specific focus on, and you've heard some really, really passionate folks that are addressing that here in the organization. We want to always and continue to increase availability and access to the resources and opportunities that people have around recreation and culture and social events and so forth, and we want to ensure protection and conservation of natural ecosystems, little bit bigger piece there than, it was a little, little micro last time, so big picture type of thing there. And as far as the economic growth and prosperity, increase the supply of affordable and attainable housing inventory. Now, keep in mind that every one of these goals has specific KPI measures, so key performance indicators, this one is a literal number of increasing the number in that inventory, so we, we know exactly what we're doing and how we're doing on it. We want to support the redevelopment of the stressed communities, maybe revise the harbors plan, do some things around that, and increase support to small business and entrepreneurship. These are the big picture pieces, this is the what we intend to do to address the challenges that are absolutely on us right now. So how does this actually get deployed? If you think about the strategic plan as a target, the big strategic piece itself, there's a couple of things to consider. The majority of the work we do in the organization, again, goes to achieving the three focus areas, the thriving community, the quality of life, and also the economic prosperity. So, everybody in this organization is contributing to achieving the strategic plan, we all have a role to play, no matter what business we do or job we do, down to the, all the way to, to the folks on the front lines, they all have a role to play, we all do in this. The, so, so the, the idea is that if you do not have a goal that is specific to the work you do, maintain course and speed, continue to improve your processes, you're doing fine, just keep growing, growing your business, doing the things to provide your levels of service. If you do have a goal in the plan, that is, requires your work or your focus in your department or your function to do, what it means is that there is now a greater focus to achieve the things that you are already being held accountable to achieve. So it's actually good news, if you've got a goal in here that says, we want to address homelessness, for example, because when it comes to prioritizing resources, Eric and I had this conversation, both he and I provide support for a lot of the forward-facing things, and we realize that if it's in the strategic plan, we have to prioritize our folks to help achieve that in that team. So it makes sense, you have availability, more resources, more focus, business plan initiatives, things like that, this all is taken into consideration, because it's focused on achieving your strategic plan. So those are the two pieces there, everybody contributes to this, every single person in the organization, it just depends on, in this cycle, if there's something specific that we need to help you with in your area to, to address these pieces. We will be reviewing performance internally, very often, looking at numbers to see, is this what we're doing, how, what are we doing? No, but there's also gonna be transparency to this. One, we're going to have not only an internal site, we're using Power BI to look at all of the numbers to support what we're doing, but we're gonna have an external site, too, where the citizens can see how we're doing on these things. Are we doing what we said we would do? So there's a lot of, a lot of accountability and transparency that will go with this, and we will have a very robust two-year review cycle of all of this, so we will come back to you to see, have things changed, is the environment different, have we done enough to achieve something here, or is there something new that came up, a pandemic, whatever, that has thrown us off and we need to refocus, so that'll happen on, on a two-year cycle. So I wanted to give you the, the overview today, we'll ask you on the seventeenth to, to adopt it, it'll be on a consent, but we have between now and then, too, if there's additional questions or, or any other information that's needed from us, know that this is a more agile strategic plan than we've had in the past, because we've learned some lessons about how quick things change, and we've got to be agile as a, as a county government to address the things that we need to, when we need to do that. So, any questions from the board?
Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mariano?
Mark, years ago, we did the reviews, and we had the reviews, you had updated like three different segments. When was the last time we did that, and when will we do that again?
A long time ago, you're right, but we would like to be able to come back to the board and, and give that, at least, if, if, I'll say at least twice a year, if not quarterly, so.
I think even annually, even fine, but just, again, we, we find to see what we did, what we did before, what we achieved, what we didn't achieve, and what's still on the list, and where we're going.
Absolutely, sir, and the.
That'd be good to hear.
You will also have that dashboard that you'll be able to look at as the rest of the citizens to see how, what we're doing on things, but you'll get the behind-the-scenes detail from us, so thank you for that, yes.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just glad to see this, I think it's got a lot of metrics in it that we can really get our hands on, so that's good to see.
Beautiful, I will, I will tell you that the, the collaboration, not just with the team, because all five, all the branches were represented on the team, working on this, the Strategic Plan Development Committee, but they also consult the department heads, who are going to be doing this work, and we're engaging a lot more people across departments, across branches, to really make a difference in this, so.
I do, I do wonder, you know, I have my leadership council meetings, I do the, have the Harbor, the Harbor South, which is the Holiday, all that area, and now I have one for the Trinity Odessa area, and so, I wonder if it's possible to make a little trifold of our, the county's strategic plan that I can hand out to the HOA members, that they can take back, something easy that the public can, you know, and all of us, when we have speak engagements, can let them know what we're working on.
Very glad you mentioned that, Commissioner, because that's a piece I forgot, we will be producing, I'll hand out a leaflet, a, a little brochure that will do exactly that.
Yeah, and then it can have a link, if they want to learn more, maybe.
Absolutely.
Come to the website.
Perfect, you bet.
Any other questions?
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Yes, sir. Okay, that ends our regular items, we'll move on to old miscellaneous business, and we'll start with Mr. Waitman.
Thank you, Chair.
Good, Sean's still here. So it started as a, a customer called us about a book, a couple of books in our library system, and the books that, that they found were in the easy reading picture book session, section of the libraries for little kids, this book is rated pre-K to third grade, and so there's three copies countywide, I'll pass them out and y'all can read them. I'll pass them out and y'all can read them as you wish. But what you don't think hits close to home is adult conversation in our kids' environments about transsexual, all the things that go on that people figure out in life as they get older. And so our office, once we looked into it, it was brought to our attention. We asked the library team to do a full review and got with Mr. Carvalla, Ms. Pearson, and Sean McGarvey. I can't tell you how grateful I am for how serious the team took this exercise. And here, we can pass this down. You know, these books look harmless. Parents started reading this to their kids. And so we went through the exercise, and so far, there were 96 books found with similar verbiage for young adults and 34 were juvenile, which is how they're classified. So 130 total. We compared the list to the Florida Department of Education's objection list, and there were about, there were 100 books that matched that criteria. So Pasco County Library System had at least 30 additional books on top, over and above. And so they're currently running, Sean and his team are currently running audits here. Pass it now. The third one's missing somewhere, but it's.
Is this the same one?
Yeah, same one. But there was one, it's the same one. It's one in each section of the county. There's one in central, east, and west parts of the county of this book. So easily readable for, you know, across county. So we're doing an audit to see what books are there. And this message is really a PSA to all the parents and grandparents out there that, look, please be vigilant to what your kids and grandkids may be reading. We live in a very busy, busy world, and you can't ever tell. If you look at these books, they look quite benign. They look harmless. And so what I'm hopeful to do with Sean's leadership and Kathy is remand, as we find these books, remand all of these, this material back to the library board, or whatever the appropriate policy is, and have them vet, thoroughly vet these books. And then see what the library advisory board, the members that we appoint, feel that they're appropriate or not. They have a list, the objection list from Florida Department of Education, and other material will see if this, this reading material is appropriate for our littlest to, you know, they're all minors, in my opinion, until they graduate high school. So it was just disturbing. It hit close to home.
It's the same book.
And I felt that the need that we need to do a public service announcement and that folks, you know, pay attention to what you read, pay attention to what your youngins are looking at. And again, I just appreciate Kathy and Sean and Mike, the seriousness and the professionalism that your staff has showed during this exercise. And I look forward to seeing what we come up with and then engaging the library advisory board and see what they have to say. So I don't know if any other board members feel any type on this and if professional staff has any other comments.
Mr. Marriott?
This is extremely disturbing. I think we had this conversation about two years ago, getting certain books out that was brought to our attention. Why this is in our library is beyond me. I don't think we need to wait for a committee. I think we need to get on this thing right now. This is absolutely horrendous.
Ms. Jaeger?
I just want to thank Commissioner Waitman for spearheading this because I completely agree we have to get these books out of our library.
I think we'll get an answer.
Yes, sir. Sean McGarvey, Libraries Director.
Those books have been what is called suppressed and removed under review, so they are currently not on the shelf. So and all of the titles that the commissioner stated have been also suppressed from the catalog and removed at this current time.
Are they still in our schools?
I can't speak to that, ma'am.
We don't control that.
I can't, so.
He controls the library.
May I, Commissioner here. So the Florida Department of Education has their objection list, and I'll get my office to email that out to everybody. And so from what our research shows, the school system follows, I guess, this objection list rules. Pasco County Libraries is under our purview. And so what Sean and his team have done is, you know, compared this list and then found some above and beyond as we're looking and reviewing. So this is completely our, this board's jurisdiction, and we can make the decision that we see fit.
I'm ready to make a motion. You're ready. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So we have set up a process for these books to be vetted. I would highly encourage the board to allow that process to work. State is currently being sued by the publishers of.
Yes.
Some of the materials that are on the objection list. So I would, the process was set up for a reason. I'd let that process work its way through.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion for the process or is it?
No.
I'm assuming that.
Process? You all approved the process a year ago?
Two years ago, sir.
Two years ago.
Like I said, I thought we had dealt with this thing, so I'm glad they're suppressed. But again.
Right.
Okay. Why isn't on the shelf? For now, it's good for the process.
There is civilian oversight board on it, and they will begin the review process.
Well, when we hear back from them, please let us know. Good job. All right. Thank you.
Okay, I got the list. You done? All right, so Gina, I have some photos, I think, so I'll look to see which ones you put up first, but I'm going to try and go through them kind of fast. Oh, I had the pleasure of being a celebrity guest at the Community Service Council's CHOP event. We won. Yay!
Wait a minute, you cooked?
My son and I cooked, yeah. And we would have won a whole bunch of them for two little tweaks, but we won the appetizer and we won the overall money coming in. I got to tell you, if you get asked to do this, it's a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun, although.
That tenderloin looks like beef jerky.
We didn't use any tenderloin. What tenderloin?
It's a cannoli.
That's a cannoli.
It was a joke.
Oh. No, because I was given a piece of tenderloin, but I didn't use, no, it wasn't tenderloin. Steak, I did not use it. But those, we had to do breaded mussels, frozen breaded mussels. Not in my repertoire. Anyway, that was a lot of fun, and that money went to the Community Service Council, who makes a big dinner, Thanksgiving dinner, and does a lot of scholarships. Okay, next picture. Okay, you know, I'll leave this for you to talk about, Commissioner Oakley, because you went to both of them, but that was a great tour that we went on, and I'm going to be going to Pinellas Counties as well. But I missed the Pinellas County because I was at the Governor's Conference on Tourism, and that was very interesting. And I, one of the things that I came out of it was, Sean, I'm glad you're here, because I want to tie our tourism council in more with the cultural council and work on some joint projects. I went to a presentation of what other counties are doing, and I just want to make sure we're firing on all cylinders.
Yes, sir. Sean McGarvey, Libraries Director. Yes, ma'am, we have a meeting next week, and we can bring that up to the CAAC as we discuss it.
All right, and I want to make sure some of those meetings get on my schedule so I can attend some.
Absolutely, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we have a video. Thanks, Sean. We have a video that I'd like you to see that my staff has been doing a little research on. You know, we don't recycle glass here in Pasco County, which drives me crazy.
It's all over the state in the.
So watch this. Yeah, so watch this. Because you'll see what other people are doing.
I'm going to use this equipment here behind me to turn glass into sand. The whole process starts here with a 12 jaw pressure module. The glass will be fed into the hopper. It will vibrate down through the jaw crusher where it's crushed to about three-quarter range minus. Then it comes up this discharge conveyor under a crossbelt magnet. And the crossbelt magnet will pull steel lids or caps from the stream and kick them off into a separate bin. The crushed glass then falls into the speed hopper here where it can be evenly metered out of this vibrating feeder on the bottom, onto this conveyor belt, up the conveyor belt, into our 16-by-12 hammer mill. The hammer mill will do the fine crushing where it takes a cullet-sized glass and crushes it down into sand through our 0.8-millimeter stream. To keep the dust down, water detectors can be installed or a drip of water added to the hammer mill, which will greatly reduce the dust while keeping the final product dry. That works really, really well. We can take all that scrap glass and steel caps, run it through the equipment, and we turn it into a really nice glass sand. This is about 70% passing 30 mesh and 50% passing 50 mesh. I can squeeze it in my hand. It's not sharp at all. No glass shards in there. It's all nice and rounded. It's just nice sand. We've sold these to municipalities, governments, cities, recycling plants, islands where they're crushing their glass and using it for beach rehab. This stuff is really, really cool. You can use this stuff for sandblasting, beach remediation. There's a whole list of other things you can do with this crushed glass, and it works really, really well. And then here's the steel that came out, various knots that were there, geared down, pulled right up in the nugget, did a great job. If you'd like any more information on the equipment you signed, you can find our contact information.
Okay, that's what we should be doing with our glass. This is what Disney does with their glass, and they do their trails and their landscaping and their beaches, whatever, with the glass. So I'd love for us to look into this.
They make money with it?
That machine is not very expensive at all. So I want to throw that out there.
What's the price, you know?
Huh?
Do you know the price?
I think Katie said $6 million, $6,000? I don't know if she'll text me. If she's listening, maybe she'll text me. But let's watch this video now. This is where we can get the money from. Okay, watch this.
They're throwing away an estimated $68 million worth of coins every year. One waste company is on a mission to collect all that loose change. Fox Business Jeff Block has left that facility in Lawrenceville, Pennsylvania this morning. Jeff?
Talk about one man's treasure and another man's trash and another man's treasure. This is a company called Red World. You're looking at the product of trash that has been incinerated. They don't start a line, they don't, somebody sees, they have three cinder cones and they harvest the metal, for example. That's all over the country. I was telling. I think the most interesting thing, not the most important thing, the most interesting thing is they're finding in the trash, coins, looking around the hole. That's where coins are dropping through the store here. I'll come down here and show you just what's happening. This, by the way, is what it looks like when it comes to them. This is incinerated trash. There is plenty of crap in there. And come over here and look what's being sorted out. Again, some of it is the stuff that Disney would take, well, these are the elements in your trash. In here, I'm seeing pennies. These are penny bars with, and over here, I'm seeing quarters and quarters.
Well, Jeff, here we have is a series of storage materials. This is about four-five particles for you to get the flat keys. Look at the hardware, the multi-porter.
I can dig down into this story and maybe I can see.
$10 million!
That's just all the money right here. And it does look like, and over here, one last thing I want to show you before we head away, and that is it being washed. And then it comes out looking like actual money.
It is money.
At a washing station, this allows.
And a key.
What condition or been damaged? But also let us know what denomination we're dealing with.
You get millions of dollars of coins out of this recycling process.
We absolutely do. If you're on a hunt, we do. The coins have the small piece of our storage.
I think it's all of the metal metals that you recycle.
Absolutely. So we found this stuff finally and finally here.
I keep the stuff out of the landfill, really.
Look at that!
Real money, urban farming, they call it.
Mike? What's going on with our money?
What, that is what.
Do we do that?
My understanding that some of our iron and ferrous materials do go to that facility. So I don't know what the details of the agreement are. We do run our recycling program, and it is taken down to a materials facility down in St. Pete, and that's where we stop touching it, so.
Well, I want to find out what's going on with our money.
Maybe that's how we keep our price per ton so low.
I choose not to throw it away, personally.
Well, I hope that we're getting it.
Yeah.
That was shocking, how much money is.
We'll get you some details from the program.
All right, I got one more video.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, one more? So let's go back to that machine.
Oh, I don't have a solar powered video?
So the machine that breaks down the bottles to glass, to sand, you know, years ago, we used to do it. Years ago, we looked at machines that actually took it down to the smaller chunks, not to the fine. First time we seen the fine one. But I think that is definitely what we need to go do.
Yeah.
And I think they should bring some items back up to us.
Yeah.
It's a phenomenal, I mean.
And Katie said there's grants for that, and Dr. Bellis knows where to find those grants for that machine.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to skip the solar power one today, and I'm going to go to, well, I'll go to that photo, and then I have something else, and I'm going to pass this out to you guys. I don't know how many copies I have. So next, this is, this is a house on Patriot Lane. It's next door to the hoarder. I sent this to some of you guys. This gentleman's is interesting. When you talk to him, he just wants to talk how he's the king of Switzerland. But this is his front yard, and this is his fence. And you know, we don't have fence permits, so you know, is this allowed by code? It reminds me of that metal fence in your district, that every time I drive down 52, I just wonder how that can be legal to have pieces of metal laying against something with all those cars behind it. But this is his fence, and that's how he gets in and out of his house, up and down that ladder.
That's in District Four.
So, oh, District Four, okay, that's your problem. We're going to talk about that. I'll have photos at the next board meeting. But that cannot be legal, and I just want to know if it is, that this is how you get into your yard. And I think Brad told me you're not supposed to have a six-foot fence across the front of your yard, and I've got it all over in my district. One just went up on Seven Springs Boulevard, a rowing. So who's watching out? Who's departments to watch out for people? I think they call it making compounds, putting these six-foot fences above, in the front of their yard, but surely, surely we have to do something about this. All right, what I passed out to you, something that's been bothering me for a while, and it really came to a head because I think we have a little issue with Angeline and the power company that doesn't want to bury the lines. Is it Angeline that wants, or Moffett? Moffett wants their power lines buried, but I know that my brother went through Hurricane Andrew, and after that, you know, they were without electricity for weeks in Miami. All the power lines have gone underground in Miami-Dade County. And it took them a while, but they kept, they got them underground. This is, so Florida Power and Light, 90% of their new distribution lines that they install are underground. TECO, 50% of TECO's power lines are underground, mostly in areas of new construction.
What about Moffett? Who covers that area?
That is with La Cucchi, and they don't want them to put them underground. And listen, I hate driving by these nice developments and seeing the power lines in front of it, and then they can't, you know, they look ugly, and then you can't put the trees. In most places, you guys, if you ever drive Sarasota, you drive down there, Jeff, you see that the new developments have the power lines underground.
Local distribution lines are required in Manatee and Sarasota to be underground by.
Why are we not doing that? Why are we not doing that?
Most developments, your local distribution lines aren't buried.
Right.
In this particular case, I don't know if we're talking about transmission, which is higher voltage, which is orders of magnitude more expensive to protect and to air.
But do we require local transmission lines to be underground?[1709.85]
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think we do.
Where I live, mine are underground.
Yeah, it's better for them to be underground. But I don't think we do.
I don't see the new developments or new neighborhoods with...
That's W R E C.
...above that power, that one's speaking.
But my understanding is, and I'm going, you know, Commissioner, it's your district, and you might talk with them, but I was, it was brought to my attention that there's this disagreement happening, and Moffett would very much like their lines to be underground. And, but if we don't have this rule that all these other counties have, I think we need it.
I'll reach out to David Lambert and ask him.
Yeah. And, okay, I think that'll be it for me. I'll leave the solar power for the next one.
Ms. Jaeger?
Okay. Do I have a picture? All right, so...
Oh, yeah.
Yep, we were all here. The Department of Health, Pasco County Premier's New Dental Office. We attended the revenue paying ceremony for the Department of Health and Premier's New Dental Office. They did an amazing job with the building. It's absolutely beautiful. They have a pediatric center, and they're going to be able to provide service to people that don't have insurance and are medically underserved. So very excited.
And Premier has a dental office in that building.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, so I got to meet Nikki and her team. I got the new commissioner tour. I enjoyed my time there. All right, next slide.
Oh, yeah.
So this is a fire in Moon Lake, a family that attends River Ridge High School, three kids. The mom and the children were living in a shed. So one of my first phone calls, and I want to give a shout out to the firefighters and firefighter charities. They immediately got this family one week in a hotel. So just their rapid response was amazing. The outpouring from our community has been incredible. We've been able to raise funds and gift cards and just provide shelter. And a new development is, the mom is looking at a mobile home right now. Somebody generously in our community has discounted it by a lot, so they may have a place to stay, like permanently.
So do they, are they going to move the mobile home to this lot?
They can't.
Okay, that's our question.
Nope, they can't. And the mobile home is already on another lot. It was just very sad because the kids, the kids were like, well, okay, we're here for a week, Mom, and where are we going to be? Because they truly lost everything.
But you said they were living in a shed?
Yeah. Yep.
That's...
So just, just a shout out to firefighter charities and our amazing community. Pasco really came together to help this family out.
Did someone do a GoFundMe page? Because I was looking through the...
Not right now. Firefighters are going to set up a link for the family.
Okay, because we'd like to help.
Yeah. And that's all I have, just a four.
What started the fire?
Gina, I think I got a couple of pictures just sent over to you.
You have most of the electronics.
Okay. Ms. Mariana?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So just coming up with first. That was the Oasis Pregnancy Center right down the street. We had to move up to the lobby because there was so many people there. Really, really great turnout. Representative Maggot Steel were there as well. And next one is Premier Healthcare. What a, what a, what a awards event they had. You can see the usual sponsors, Advent Health, HCA, Florida, Florida Blue, My Road, called actually. They were doing a tremendous presentation of what they do for people. And I'm going to get this slideshow forwarded to everybody to take a look, but I think there's one more picture. It just shows you, it was a packed room. So they are doing a phenomenal job, and I know we're looking to try to help them further to go through it. But the way they highlighted what they're doing and why they're doing it was very important. That's all I have.
Did you get the stand-up, Commissioner Mariana? Under 45?
All right, Mr. Kabala?
Yes, sir. Board indulges just a couple of items here. First and foremost, we were approached by the folks from Safety Town to engage and consider and take over that operation from Sheriff and the school board. I believe it falls in line with our community risk reduction programs within the fire department. However, I do think it would be prudent to enter into some kinds of agreements. So I would just like the board, just, it's just a motion for me and county attorney to kind of sit down and craft up an agreement to bring back to the board for future consideration regarding potentially taking over Safety Town.
Okay. You need a motion?
Yeah.
So, all right. Got a motion?
Second.
Want a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passed five-zero.
All right, just a couple of, couple of recognitions, actually. Our community development team was recently honored with the New Construction Rental Development Award at the Florida Housing Coalition's Conference. So our developer, Birdsong, did a great job of constructing 88 units of affordable housing at the Tanser Square and the Coalition, the Coalition of the Homeless. So just well done for our housing team led by Jeff McKittrick and Marie Preyong. So we're very Pasco proud about that. So just to show that to the board that our community development is doing wonderful things. Also, I would like to recognize our purchasing department as well. They had, they were recently recognized as one of 49 counties in the country to be met with the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement award. So again, it just goes to show that, you know, the team continues to do great things out there. I think we've mentioned this in the past, but our community grading system with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, we were upgraded, and then we went from, I think we went from a six to a five, which actually results in, I want to say, 25% reduction, a total of 25% reduction in what our residents can pay for blood insurance. So that's almost four million dollars in savings to residents as a result of those efforts. And a lot of this, you know, adds off to emergency management and VCS folks. A lot of it is just documentation processes and paperwork. So we're trying to hit that sweet spot of getting to a four. I think after that, you really have to make some adjustments in your codes, which could add some costs. But right now, the team is working very, very hard to try to bring those costs down for our citizens. And the last item I want to bring up, it's with great sadness that I just wanted to bring it up, Dorian Packard, who was a former employee, she retired a few years ago, there's a resolution was passed. She'd retired because of, you know, my battle with cancer, she did pass away. And it just, it just indulged a brief moment of silence for her. She meant a lot to Dr. Bellis and his team, but she'll be sorted this.
Okay.
And that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stiles?
I don't have anything generally for the board.
Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one item. Back in July, you actually, the board presented a resolution to Patrice Monaco McBrye, who was the retiring Inspector General at the time. And I just wanted to introduce the board to the newly appointed Inspector General with my office, Christine Colliano. Would you mind just stepping forward real quick? Just a little bit of background with, about Christine. She has 12 years' experience in auditing and leadership. Christine previously worked for the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, Office of Inspector General, the Citrus County Clerk's Office, and our office as an internal auditor. In addition, she mentored, directed, developed, and trained junior auditors in her leadership roles at the Citrus Clerk's Offices, and most recently, as the IG Manager in our office. Christine holds a Bachelor's of Arts, get this, in Japanese. How fun is that? From the University of Rochester, and is a certi, and a certificate in Management Studies. She possesses many skills that align with the needs of the positions, such as auditing and investigating, risk assessment, project management, and strategic planning. She also obtains certifications relevant to the position. She's a Certified Fraud Examiner, a Certified Government Auditing Professional, and a Certified Inspector General Auditor. These certifications take many years of experience to attain. So without further ado, I wanted to introduce Ms. Christine Colliano.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Attorney, and County Administrator. I appreciate this formal introduction. I have met some of you, but not all of you. And as Nikki already spoke, I have some technical background, but I am extremely grateful and very excited about this role to take the baton and be the next Inspector General. Interestingly enough, there was some really good tieback to the presentation on the strategic plan. There were three key words in there that had some resonation with me, and they are change, which we're all faced with, agility, and objectives. So those are three key components of what our office has endeavored to do, is to serve you and the departments. And as much as there's a technical aspect to what I do, I am definitely a people person. So I really endeavor to forge new relationships with county management that's already started, grow the ones we already have, and look forward to a continued partnership where we can be of service to all of you. And I thank you very much for this opportunity.
Welcome to Pasco, so...
Thank you.
You got a very important job to make sure everything falls in line like it should for us. This is a very important job.
And I will do my best to serve you both.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, I think I got a picture or two up there. Maybe. There we go. I spoke at the new Health Department building over in Hudson, and I always bring this up. This new facility offers a lot of services to our citizens of Pasco County, and just couldn't be any more prouder of the team there that they have. And the train has done a great job in taking over there for the Health Department, done a good work for all of us. But it's very important. That office serves a lot of people with very low means to be able to do some of the health things they get to do. I mean, but they cover that for them. But the fact of it is, all over our county, we have many different hospitals and clinics and doctors' offices coming in our county, and I always speak to that. And the fact of it is, the benefactor of all these hospitals and this clinic here with the Pasco County Health Department, they're all the benefactor, is the citizens of Pasco County. And I thank all of them for all they do to have the best health we can for our citizens in Pasco County, so...
Ms. Chairman?
Yes?
I want to thank all your Commissioners for showing up for that one. I couldn't make that one. It was a family, a family wedding was at, so I couldn't make it. But thank you for showing. Really big thing of, if you saw on the agenda, in the agenda earlier today, we had the selling of the old building for the Health Department, too. So that money goes back into the county to go through other things.
That's good. All right, and what else we got here? Oh, this one here, we have the, ten of the Pinellas and Hillsborough County Public Safety Operations Centers. I can tell you, Ms. Starky, Ms. Pinellas County, but it was a much newer facility that actually, I say much newer, I think it's been in operation about 10 years, but very, very fresh, very new. They built, in Pinellas, they built for their future needs. So they have room to grow and had dormitory and that type thing, because when you're in this building, then those operations go on 24/7. So people had to be able, be housed in there. And then also, they have area for food prep and things of that nature for them while they're there. And then we went over to Hillsborough County, very well-run office there, also same as, same as Pinellas County. Fact of it is, they're fixing, they're busting at the seams, because they built theirs more on what their needs were at the time, and not so much out in the future. And now they're having to, have to make some changes and improvements, so... I know I wasn't supposed to, but I did tell a few of the firemen there that they could come to Pasco County, so that's a normal, I can't help it. I just have to do that every now and then, so... Well, we have a lot of public safety and fire people joining in more classes. In October, we'll have another class, and it's growing. Yep, we're getting more and more people come to Pasco County for, in the past three or four years, not last year, but the past three or four years, we'd lost 70 public safety people. And so we'd always hire to catch back up after losing 70 a year to other, other departments and counties nearby. The fact of it is, last year, we only lost three. And so we made up that three and added a 29 additional with a class of 32. And then since then, we've had a class, I think it was 27, the last class. So these are all new employees coming into Pasco, and it looks like to me we're in a different scenario than we have been in the past, and we are able to keep our employees. And that's, thank all the board members for all they do to help get the right things for the public safety and all of our folks, you know, to be able to stay and work for us, and they can live and work here and play. So it's a great thing to see them not leaving Pasco County. We've had them go the opposite way.